We'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
... to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the December 27, 2018, meeting, the last one of the year. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder, and contact Craig if you need a listening device, and he's at the front table. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from December 18, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,289,360.
Pay the bills.
And forty-five cents.
Pay the bills.
Is the motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Register of D's official statement of revenue collected November 2018, and that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Motion to approve.
Second.
And then a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements. There are none. Item number seven, notice and request, there are none. Item number eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. Next opportunity for public comment. I only see people I know, so no public comment today. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a brief update on the health mental task force, and I think we're going to move that down the list just a little bit, so we'll come back to number 10. Item number 11, we're also going to come back to. We'll move on to item 12, which is a public hearing to consider supplements of the 2018 annual budget. Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. We have a briefing memo for you that summarizes all of the 2018 supplement requests to be considered this morning. The list totals $355,700 for the general fund. There is one supplement item listed on the resolution for which the dollar amount has not yet been determined, and that is a potential donation to the Glory House affordable housing project. I'm not sure if you may want to defer your decision on this or wait for action on this resolution until after you can hear the presentation that was on the agenda for this morning.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I mean, we had an opportunity to hear a presentation from the Glory House a couple of weeks ago. I know that there have been some changes in the Federal Bureau of Prisons contract with the Glory House, which would have been helpful maybe to hear a little bit of an update on, but we did receive a letter, I believe all the Commissioners received a letter from Dave Johnson. I'm not sure, given the weather and the timing of this meeting, if there's, you know, if there's been any, I haven't heard from Dave, so I'm not sure what the issue is, but I think that we probably have the information that we need, given maybe that Kim could provide us some additional information about where we sit. You know, honestly, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of this, just given the fact that it has nothing to do with the Glory House. I'm a big supporter of the Glory House and personally support the Glory House, but, you know, it's just that we have a lot of responsibilities on the county side, and it didn't come through the regular budget cycle. I personally prefer that any giving we do particularly to nonprofits go through the regular budget cycle so that we have an opportunity to vet it and compare it to the other needs of the county, both on, I mean, there's obviously a lot of nonprofits that are very deserving of the work, and the Glory House would certainly be high on my list of entities that provide really good results, but I just think it's hard to do it on a one-off basis when we don't have an opportunity to compare it to all the other needs before us. So I'm perfectly willing to talk about it right now. I'm not, it's not clear that I'm in a, I don't think I'm in a support, making a gift to the Glory House right now.
Okay. No comments?
Commissioner, I'm somewhat in agreement with Commissioner Bender on this, and, you know, it's obviously been a huge, you know, I guess stumbling block for the Glory House with this recent development, but we shouldn't let ourselves be carried away by the moment to make a decision. It's not to say we might not do something in the future, and maybe even in the not-too-distant future, but we shouldn't make a decision under the pressure of the moment. That's my thought.
Commissioner Bennigan.
Well, I certainly understand the opinions of that conversation. I was hoping that we would see a representative from the Glory House this morning. I think part of the issue for me is the fact that although there are tons of nonprofits in the community, this one directly affects frankly our cost of keeping people independent and out of the jail, and the more facilities that we create as an alternative to frankly jail time or finding them work when 63 percent or something like that help pay for the cost of staying where they're at. I think the project that the city has supported also should be supported by the county so that we can start alternative programs that frankly work to our benefit. So I guess I don't agree totally with the conversation that we've had at this point. I don't think just because it's a nonprofit that it automatically gets grouped into what we do as a county government and what our responsibilities are. So I would like to support it, but I also would have liked to have more information from the Glory House in some of their needs frankly.
I'm wondering if we could, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Karski.
Conversation, and I too would have liked a little bit more information. From what I understand, they're trying to raise $100,000, and they're asking us for 48, I believe is the specific number, and I can't remember if it's for a project, is it for building?
It's the building. Their buildings.
Is there a way we can, because they're still looking for the rest of the money, it's nice to have, if we had our money in there, is there a way where we can agree to fund that portion if they make the rest, or kind of on a matching basis for what they're making? Has that ever been done, or consideration that's ever been had?
I was, two comments, and one is, Kim, maybe you could speak a little bit to money that we have in human services, and so it would be coming out of the human services housing, and the other one is, I'm not quite sure how all these, you know, we have to roll call on several different things. If we can roll call on some of the other ones and leave that one aside for just even five more minutes, but could you comment on the, on those, and then, and then comment on whether there's a couple other, if we can, if we can approve B and C or something, and then come back, so.
Sure. We did take a look at the human services budget results for 2018, and they will be, they will end the year about $100,000 below budget in the welfare rent assistance budget line, and we've spoken with Carrie Benz, and her thoughts were that, you know, she was supportive of redirecting some of that budget savings towards this project if that is the commission's wishes to do so. In addition to that, I can also report that our salaries and benefits for the year finished about $1 million below the budgeted projections, and that's due to vacant positions throughout the year, so.
Okay. Commissioner Karski.
Just a comment, and I'm going back here a few months from my, one of my meetings with Carrie and her staff on the $100,000, and it's mostly the savings that was realized because of changes at the state level and how they're, those things are approved the way I understand it. So it's not that we overshot our budget there, it's that there's still a great need for what exists there, it's just unable to be paid because of procedural changes, I guess would be a good way to put it. So if we're looking at $48,000, it would seem to fit hand in hand with what that program was meant for anyway.
I'm kind of on the same page as you guys, is that this is helping us hopefully to keep those recidivism numbers low, which saves us on the jail side, which, but maybe, Bob, I'll let you comment if you want to, but maybe we could approve a couple of these other ones and just come back. Did you have a comment on that?
Yeah. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Now, I guess I'm, from 2001 until 2017, I was aboard, on the board of directors for the Glory House, and during that time, we did a lot of work. I actually built Sands Freedom Center down there, and then at one point I also convinced then-Governor Janklow to give us one of his, his buildings that were built down at the Mike Durfee Prison in there to be for administration, so I'm very familiar with the project that's coming up, and what it could be best described as is a three-quarter house, because I'm sure all of you are aware that when somebody gets out of a halfway house, it is very difficult for them to get any housing because of the nature of some of the offenses that have happened in their lives, and getting them back on foot, you know, with the proper footing to enter, re-enter society is very difficult. The, the three-quarter housing that they're going to build is on the campus, and so people that would live in that three-quarter housing would be paying rent, not unlike up at the safe home, and they would also be, have the services that are right there, and then I would also tell you that Alcoholics Anonymous is a, is a walk across the street. It just, it just rings true. It's a good fit, and I hope that you're able to come to some kind of a agreement on helping this project out. I know Dave's not here to speak on behalf of the Glory House, so I'm kind of pinch-hitting for him, but, you know, I've seen that, I've seen that, that place make very big impacts on people's lives and change lives, and so I really appreciate the fact that you're considering it today.
Commissioner Bennigan.
I'll just add one more comment, and I know where we're at. I reviewed the financials last night, but it seems to me that $1 million personnel savings is a separate issue with what we're going to need in the future for the jail, additional personnel, all those kinds of concerns. We don't need to go into details about that. But the difference between the health and human services budget, which is about $100,000, and the fact that we know we have a settlement, so to speak, with some of the hospitals and medical costs to keep people, again, home and out of institutional care, we're going to have, still going to have a savings of $45,000 to $50,000 in that particular line item. I believe personally that we're going to be able to save cost in housing at the jail by doing that, and it's a one-time thing. I don't see it as a commitment for any particular long-range operating cost as much as I do the construction of finding people a home, because frankly, if they're not working, they're going to be part of our medical cost, they're going to be part of housing costs, they're going to be a day-to-day operating cost to our operation as a county. So I will support a portion of that $100,000 gift, if you will, in our budget back to the Glory House to help us save money in the long run.
That's, that's where I'm at, too. Just paying the rent forward instead of paying it month to month, but.
Senator Chair. You know, I, I totally agree, and it would be easy to pay for this, I mean, to vote for this, but I just think we should wait for our feelings to subside slightly after this disastrous, you know, grant that they lost, and I don't see that we need to rush into it, but it's, it would be easy for me to vote for this.
I don't feel like the grant had anything to do with my decision. This was a conversation before that I even found out about the grant, so, but Kim, is there some, oh, Commissioner Bender.
Well, and I just, I mean, and I don't want to, I agree with Commissioner Barth. This is an easy thing to support, and I personally support it. I just disagree with the process. I think this should have come forward in budgeting, where we didn't give any new gifts to any nonprofits at all, and we didn't have an opportunity to vet it out and really listen to what our internal experts thought about this gift versus other projects like the Arch or other things that we could really support as well, and so for me, it's a, it's a process vote. I don't agree with the process. It certainly has nothing to do with the fact that I, that the Glory House is a worthwhile organization, does great work, and, and has good results, so.
Thank you. With that, Kim, which ones could we move, can we move on to? I don't want to mess up the.
So you're asking to.
Can we approve one of these other ones?
You want to pause the public, this is the budget hearing.
Yes.
So you want to proceed to the other supplement items?
Can we do the sheriff's office at 152? Can we, can we do item B? Let me see. Okay. Can we go on to 13 without messing up what we're doing?
Yes.
So we're just going to pause on 12 for a few minutes, and we'll just move on to 13.
Okay.
This is all because of the weather has messed up our calendar completely, our agenda. So item number 13 is consider a motion to authorize the following 2018 supplements using grants, donations, and reimbursements. Item A is various county funds, $274,211.88 to various county budgets.
This supplement action is a routine action for, as Cindy said, reimbursements and pass-through dollars, grant receipts for the year. The individual amounts were detailed in your briefing memo and totaled the $274,211.38. So if there are questions about specific items, I can address those. Otherwise, I'm just looking for a motion to pass that list of supplements.
Any questions for Kim on this item A?
I would make a motion to approve the supplements. Do we need to do those independently or as a total?
We're going to do the first one, and it'll be a roll call vote by item A, and so, do we have a second on item A?
So I second it.
Motion is second. Any comments on that?
I'm confused where we are, I'm sorry. Are we on 13B?
We're at 13A.
A.
13A.
I'm just getting caught up, too, so, yeah.
Various funds on 13A.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So in my 13A is the supplement to the commission budget, the subject to, so we are just doing the pass-through grant funds to the.
Doing the pass-through grant.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Got a motion and a second to approve, so a roll call vote.
All right. Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is the sheriff's office in the amount of $152,478.28 for various department revenue ASNs to various department expenditure ASNs.
I'd make a motion to approve those reimbursements from grants.
No comments from Joe? Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, nope, we got to do a roll call, a vote again.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is emergency management for $373,222.41, various department revenue ASN to various department revenue expenditures, expenditures. We have Joe again, if you have a comment on emergency management.
I think he came all the way here. He should at least get to say something.
Yes. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman at the sheriff's office. As you can see in the briefing memos that were provided to you ahead of time, it outlines the reimbursements for either grants or donations or reimbursements, just kind of shows our great partnerships with several agencies, state, federal, local, that we have that are able to support us in our endeavors in law enforcement and emergency management. They provide valuable assets and funding for many programs, and it's this time of year where we just bring it back into the budget and make everything back up to normal again.
Thanks, Joe. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joe. Next one is a consider a motion to transfer $180,000 from the general fund to the emergency management fund. Kim?
Yes. This, this authorization is, has become necessary because of some changing circumstances with emergency management grant funding. We typically, the emergency management fund relies on grant revenue for the state and local agreement performance grant, in addition to a transfer from the general fund to cover all remaining costs of the department. And in 2018, we learned that our federal awards for 2017 and 2018 were reduced. In addition, we've not received the money for our 2018 grant. We've not received that from the state as of today, and we had some benefit payouts from the emergency management fund that were beyond what was in the budget for this year. And as a result of those three circumstances, we're asking for a fund transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund for $180,000.
Any questions for Kim?
I have a question.
Commissioner Burke.
So, Kim, if that money comes, you know, January 10th, how does that affect the budget?
That would then, we will reevaluate what funds are necessary for 2019 when we get a few months down the road, and then we'll reevaluate what the cash position is of the emergency management fund at that time. We'll be coming forward with another transfer request, which was in the budget as well, but we'll wait and see where the, the cash position is at that time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
I have, I'd make a motion to approve. I do have a comment on this.
The motion is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Comment?
So, I mean, there's no doubt that emergency management's gone through some significant transition. This, I'm fairly confident is going to be a one-time kind of blip in the screen. I'm very thankful to the sheriff's office for having assumed responsibility for emergency management. They've been doing a really great job in digging in and making sure that our contracts are all up to date and properly administered. It's unfortunate that we had this lag in funding from the state, but I think overall, I feel really great about where emergency management is at this point in moving forward into, into the future.
Thanks, Commissioner Bender. And we have a motion and a second, so a roll call vote.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kim. Item number 15 is authorize the chairman to sign the 2019 agreement between Minnehaw County and Southeastern Behavioral Health and Qualified Mental Health Professionals Services to the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of JDC. The, you'll notice that there is a $50 increase per week for the on-call services itself. For the past two years, they've asked for a $100 increase. I did budget for $50 this year in the budget that you previously approved to try and help them with that, and otherwise, it's the, the same $50 an hour after that every time they come out. So I'd answer any questions that you have, otherwise I'd ask that you approve it.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Commissioner Bender?
Jamie, I know that we've talked in the past about this contract with Lutheran Social Services, and, you know, obviously, that's a, that's a fairly expensive program that has had good results, but I'm just curious how you view going into 2019, whether you think there'll be a similar kind of supplement needed in your 2019 budget for that contract?
No, I, different subject, but no, I don't anticipate that. We increased the costs for shelter care to match the costs of secured detention so that we would no longer have that leg that the county has been taking care of the last two years, and for all of our partners, basically. We've received 13 of the 15 contracts back from our partner counties without one question asked about the increase.
So you think, you're confident that that will cover this?
I am.
Okay. Any other questions on the contract? Have we looked for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second to approve the Qualified Mental Health Professionals for the Juvenile Detention Center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to go back to item number 12, 10. Thanks, Jamie. Item number 10, which is a brief update on the mental health task force from Representative Hawkeard. Thank you for slip-sliding all the way here.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I'm running a little late. I was over at Brandon for a meeting, too. Just an update in regard to the summer study for the mental health access. We took a look around the state at the facilities that now exist, and I think there's general understanding at the time as we go through these places that, that it just doesn't work to do it the way it's always been done, and that's to have the one facility at Yankton. And I think it's important to probably have some historical context for both mental illness and the chemical dependency issues, because they overlap so much now. And as I look through these statutes, I'm trying to appreciate exactly why they developed the way they did, and I think that we probably had the involuntary alcohol commitments come along sometime when they realized guardianships weren't necessarily the, the main route to use for that, and it's run through Circuit Court, which is unfortunate, because it's so cumbersome. Just making a note for myself. Back in the 80s, I did these commitments for the county, I think I did all of them for a couple of years, and it was just because they were new and hadn't been used very much, but it was becoming more, more significant. And even at that time, in the 1980s, it was primarily alcohol. It wasn't so much drugs, it was primarily alcohol. And the statutes probably developed because you didn't want to be someone who was thrown before a board just because you were an alcoholic, and I think it was more in the nature of the town drunk idea, and it was embarrassing to be labeled that, and so you'd have this right to defend yourself and go before the Circuit Court. Well, that system worked okay for alcohol, but it doesn't work very well for chemical dependency issues, specifically the meth and heroin and fentanyl and all the things we see now. So it needs to be a much more efficient and effective process than it is. But going back to the mental health issues, they overlap all the time, and as we studied through the state, the services that are available, and the number of people that are being served now, it's such a dramatic increase, everybody realizes that it needs to be regionalized. It's ridiculous to cuff somebody in Rapid City and drive them to Yankton, and it's demeaning, and it's not the way we should be treating people. So there's going to have to be something developed there, and it's going to end up being some sort of a relationship with the existing hospitals. It'd be great if there was a standalone of some sort, but I just don't see that happening, so I think it's going to be worked through in that fashion with Avera primarily here and Rapid City Regional out west, and then throughout Aberdeen, Watertown. There's no reason why we shouldn't develop satellite services in those regions as well. You know, Sioux Falls obviously serves about a third of the state, and then serves into Iowa and Minnesota as well, and I think it's important for the commission to consider how they're going to overlap with Lincoln County and work with Lincoln County, because like yesterday, I conducted hearings for Minnehaw County, I get done, and then Lincoln County steps into the same room and does their hearings. And it works up to this point, but it's, it's a bit awkward. And even when I take calls for the, the board on the days that Jim Osti isn't available, we have to decide, was this a Lincoln County case? Did it originate at the Avera Behavioral Health, or did it originate at Avera, Maine, or where it was, or where was it that the petition was filed? So those, those issues probably need to be sorted out a little bit more, but I think ultimately what's going to happen is we'll, we'll see the, the state budget push funds in the direction of helping regions establish themselves. And this isn't just a Minnehaw County thing, it's, needs to be looked at as a statewide issue so that the funding comes through the, the state budget as well. And that's one of the things I'm trying to work on as Speaker this year, that we would get a better grasp on the budget, and we'd actually be more hands-on and recognize that Sioux Falls serves a third of the state, so we need some assistance at the county level to support the mental health issues and the chemical dependency issues. In the smaller counties, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with those, and there'll still be a fair amount of transport done. there'll still be a fair amount of transport done from the, the very small counties. But for the most part, we're going to serve the Sioux Falls area and Rapid City area and break it down into smaller service areas from there. So, I think the summer study is useful. I think it helps to highlight the importance of the issue, and it's just grown so much. I mean, it's, since I started practice, it was, you know, the number of people on the hill at the time I started was like 500 people, and the state population hasn't changed that much, and now we're over 3,000. And the same with the mental health stuff. Jim just walked in, and, you know, he can certainly attest the fact that we're somewhere at an average of six petitions per day. So, we're certainly seeing the needs, and those needs are absolutely regional, and they need to be served locally. I'm hoping that we can modify some of the statutes or the, the way that we address the issues and maybe have more of a continuum of care. And that's one of the things I'm working on, is the, trying to blend the, the mental illness in with the involuntary drug and alcohol commitments. Hopefully, we'd, we'd have the expertise on a board that could address those unique issues, but oftentimes, the mental illnesses are just being masked by the, the chemical use and vice versa, so. So, we're trying to take a look at the statutes afresh. Like I say, the history of those statutes, the, the alcohol commitments, like I say, were probably the, the person who didn't want to be labeled as a drunk, and it was just a long process of alcohol abuse. Now, it's chemicals, and they can be, you can be addicted within a matter of days to some of these chemicals. So, it needs to be a much more efficient and effective process, and I think that's what we can do with potentially making the IVCs part of a board process. And I would, my view of it is that right now, we have three-member boards, and I would like to see that probably expand to a five-member board. So, you'd have two people that are more suited to chemical dependency issues. And as we have now, we have QMHPs, who are Qualified Mental Health Professionals, doing the evaluations on a, as soon as they possibly can, certainly within 24 hours. Likewise, we could do the same thing with the chemical dependency issues, get it a quick review and determine if there's a basis for holding individuals or if there's a modified setting that they could be in. So, that's what I see happening, and I, as we go forward with the change in the legislature, my interest is to strengthen the legislature and help us to get to a point where we actually decide what's in the budget instead of being told what's in the budget. And I think that's important for the Sioux Falls region so that we have the input into that initial framework instead of just taking our marching orders from the governor or from the agencies. And that's oftentimes what the real process has been, is the agencies grow to this point where they make their demands and, and there isn't much opposition because there isn't much education about the budget itself. And we're trying to make that change. So, one other thing is we certainly want to coordinate with Minnehaw County with this triage center that's in the developmental stages, and I think that can dovetail together nicely. So, I think there's a lot of, a lot of different moving parts, but they're all moving in the right direction, and I think they'll coordinate quite well. One other thing that, and, and maybe for the sake of your budget, I think that there'd probably be a beneficial savings changing to this kind of a, an expanded board addressing both mental illness and chemical dependency so that you wouldn't have the, the court-appointed attorney fees that go along with the IVCs. You know, there'd certainly be some aspect of that, but I think it might be reduced to a certain extent. So, hopefully, that would be a, a better delivery of services with less cost involved. Another thing I'll mention, too, is this is, this is off this subject a little bit, but it's, I think it's important for you to be aware of just the idea that we have traffic offenses and petty offenses that are classified as misdemeanors now, and typically, everyone's appointed counsel for those things. If those are changed to something in the nature of an infraction, like some states have as opposed to a, actually a criminal misdemeanor, we potentially could get rid of some of the court-appointed attorney fees there and potentially pull some of this off the court's docket and reduce some of those, those misdemeanor offenses that get scheduled and rescheduled and rescheduled. So, that's an aside, but it's something I'm working on. And it was brought to my attention earlier this year, there was a fellow from, originally from Aberdeen but lives in California, and contacted some of us and, and told us that, that some states just have infractions for certain traffic offenses and certain petty offenses as opposed to classifying them as a criminal misdemeanor. And the importance of that is that, you know, when you make applications for things such as a securities license, it used to be they just ask if you have any felonies. Well, now, they ask any kind of conviction. And so, these are convictions that have to be listed, and it's, it's probably an impediment to some workforce issues, too. So, working on that, trying to make those changes to some of the statutes that both the state's attorney and public defenders would probably be glad to see off their plate. So, that's just an aside, but I think it could have a beneficial impact on the, the budget for courts and court services. So, any questions about the mental health?
Thank you, Representative Hoggard. Questions? Commissioner Karski?
No, about questions as much as just your agreement with what you just said on being on the board for the Public Defenders Advisory Board. Anytime we, somebody's arrested and faces the potential loss of liberty jail time, it, it automatically sparks an attorney appointment, and if we can reduce those to, you know, fines and penalties that way, it would definitely do a lot for the, the county's budget and not to mention the jail and state's attorney, and the list goes on. But on the mental health side of it, you know, my last two years being involved with the triage committee, I've learned more than I ever thought I could potentially learn about mental health, mental health and the co-occurring dependencies on drug and alcohol, and, and they're so intertwined with each other, you can't address one without talking about the other. So, I'm, it's, we're going in the right direction, and I'm glad that you're part of this because I think the voice that you bring with your years of experience are just going to do great things for, you know, our community. You talk about mental health. For the most part, it's more treatable than diabetes as an illness, and, you know, just to make people more productive members of our society and bringing them back is going to be huge for our community and what it can do for us economically as a county, too. So, thank you.
Additional comments? Commissioner Burr?
Well, I sure appreciate you being here, Representative. I've got to say, not all of our legislators are as well-spoken as you. Thank you for coming. And you really are bringing up a, a great topic here as well. Not everyone that's in jail should be in jail. Some folks should be in a psychiatric facility of some kind. That said, it seems like, you know, our facility down south, you know, lacking accreditation, lacking staff, et cetera, has been left to wither on the vine, so to speak, and I, I worry about that. The Hughes County Sheriff speaking to us in Pure talked about having a deputy drive a fellow down there, having lunch and driving home, and found the guy was already back in Pure after being released in eight minutes from, from Yankton. And that's, that's really not what one would hope if you made that long drive, and why would anyone make that drive otherwise? But anyway, let's work on this. Let's, I, I would do anything I can to help you. The satellite idea is a great idea, and I know Lincoln County has talked about doing it with us doing the jail and then doing a, a mental facility, at least the, some commissioners have suggested that. And again, I thank you for coming and come back.
I appreciate it. I'd just point out, too, that I think there's some credible research that's developing as far as the use of drugs and the development of certain psychiatric conditions such as schizophrenia. And I think it's important on a community basis that we make sure that kids are more aware of the fact that there's a potential that marijuana use even can lead to some of these long-term mental illnesses. So, that's something we need to be aware of. And as far as the facilities like Yankton, those places aren't going to be just abandoned. There's, there are places we can use, we can repurpose that for a lot of things. There's certainly need for some state-run nursing facilities. There's, I think we could probably take these nursing homes that are closing and repurpose those for meth treatment facilities. So, there are good options for the facilities. We just need to be a little more wise about how we appropriate our funds.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
I, I mean, I was just, I think a lot of my statements have been made. I just really want to thank you for the work that these summer studies take a lot of time. There, I think that they are very worthwhile. They really give you an opportunity to kind of dig in and, and set direction for the future, and, and I just thank you for your service and taking on leadership. And I really, I think all of us here would be supportive of, and be willing to do whatever we can to help you move some of these projects forward because I, I don't think anybody who's involved in the system doesn't recognize that there's room for improvement. You know, first and foremost, for the lives of the people affected by the system. And then, secondly, because there's a lot of financial reasons that make a lot of sense for, for the average general taxpayer. So, it's a win-win-win all the way around, so, but I appreciate your leadership on these issues.
Well, you're welcome. And I, I think this is going to be kind of a two-to-three-year project to get a lot of these things done, but it's moving in the right direction. There seems to be consensus. So, thank you.
The commission and the municipalities meet Lincoln County, Minnehaw County, and we have a resolution, a resolution page, and one of them on there is education with drugs and alcohol. We feel like that's really been lacking in past years, and you brought that up, and I agree, there's a lot of things that I don't think our kids maybe understand. We've really fallen down on the education side of it, too, to catch these kids before they get so deep into it.
I think it's a lot, my generation, that most of us didn't use any kind of drugs, but there was that segment of people that did, and somehow, it caught some popular attention as though it was cool. Well, that was, the THC content in those drugs was dramatically different than what it is today, and then being laced with synthetics and all those kinds of things. I'm afraid kids get the idea that somehow, those introductory drugs, marijuana, is not a big deal. Well, it is a big deal, and it can change their lives. So, hopefully, we can get that word out more.
Thank you for coming, and like Commissioner Bender said, we're welcome to do, or we're happy to do anything we can. We do have staff that goes up for lobbying, and, and we would be happy to speak on your behalf, too, if we need to, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to item number 11. Carol, I'm wondering, have you heard at all from Mr. Johnson? Because I don't see him. Oh, okay. Bob?
I did get a text, and I apologize for not looking at my communication device, but he is in the emergency room with a child.
Okay.
And that is his reason for not being here right now, and it's unclear whether he will be able to make it today.
Okay, that's fine. I don't look at my, my text messages when I'm here either. So, with that, we will have to go on with our budget. Item, item number 12, which is a budget hearing to consider supplements for the 2018 annual budget. Kim, I guess we'll have you back. Is there questions for Kim or?
Are we going to take these individually or as a group?
This is one motion for the whole thing. Do you want to split something up? Commissioner Bender, do you have a comment, too?
Well, I, I mean, to piggyback on Commissioner Karski, I personally'd be interested. I, I know that the court administrator is here, and I'd be interested in hearing some comments from Carl about some of their supplements, so.
And we can, we can walk through every one of them and see if there's any questions on. The first one is the auditors and elections. Are there any questions on that particular one?
On the auditor one?
Yeah, the auditor. We'll just walk through that whole list right there. I think that's the list we have.
Yeah, and I guess I, yeah.
Am I on the wrong list?
Nope.
Oh, you're on the right one. Number 12.
Yep.
Sure, if we're going alphabetically, it would make sense.
Yeah, is there any questions on that?
I, yes, I do.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Litz, if you'd explain the narrative you put with your supplement request, because when I read it, it says that, oh, let's see. When you proposed your 2018 budget, you decided not to include the increases, as there was no way of knowing if the increases would be passed at the beginning of the year. What are you trying to tell us there?
Well, when I, when I, when we do the budget, it's early on, and at that time, we were still looking at, you know, some comparable market rates, and there really aren't any, and we thought a lot about it. And then, at the first of the year, that's when you set the salaries for the election officials, and I wasn't certain what was going to happen, so we left it out of the budget.
Okay, so you weren't sure what the salaries for the election workers would be at?
I wasn't sure the commission was going to grant the raises that I'd asked for.
I would suggest, I, I read the same thing, and I would suggest, even if you don't think we might approve them, you could have put it in your budget because it would have just been left over or whatever, but, I mean, because it's not a huge amount, but it would have been a good thing to probably have in the proposed budget.
Because the other way I read it, I thought we were doing an end around. Well, I don't know if I'm going to get this, I'm just going to come back at the end of the year and say, well, no, you got to give it to me because we did it. So, that, that's the way I interpreted what you were writing there, so.
We can, we can put it in upfront, then I'm not going to do it again for a few more years because I'm looking at what else is happening in the state, and I think we're at a pretty good level right now compared, like I say, compared to everybody else.
And my only suggestion, and this is your budget to run, but in two more years, I would think that you are going to need to take a look at, if nothing else, a slight increase in the rent costs and what we pay our election workers. They don't do it for the money, I know, but their time definitely is worth something. So, I would encourage you to consider that.
Along those lines of thinking, at the behest of Commissioner Bender, earlier, she, she had suggested that, excuse me, my rents were kind of all over the place depending on what folks wanted, and the, the standard $50 fee really was just kind of a token payment, and, you know, in November, somebody's got the door opening up, tracking mud in it, barely, it wouldn't even cover for it. So, Gene suggested that we standardize all of those rents, and so, we did that as well at the first of the year, and everybody seems to be pretty happy with that, so.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Burr?
I, I think, you know, the auditor ran a good election this year, and I, but I would also say that when I take my truck in to be fixed and, and they say it's going to cost 600 bucks and it costs 700 bucks, I'm not happy. But if they say it's going to cost 600 bucks and it costs 450 bucks, I'm a happy guy. So, go ahead and, you know, ask what, you know, make sure you have a slight margin, and then wind up with extra at the end is better.
Okay. Additional comments? Otherwise, move on commission office. I think that that was self-explanatory. We'll go to court services. Carl, you want to talk a little bit about court services?
Can you do my question?
It would be great, and thank you for coming. I know you sent us a couple of things yesterday in the mail, email.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carl Tonis, Court Administrator for the Second Circuit. Is there any way to switch to the document camera? Is that possible? Is that, is that a hassle? I just. The power button should be on, actually. Just a few seconds. You've got to wait like six, two seconds. Oh, okay.
You can just talk for a while, just kind of.
That's right, you can do your song and dance before the thing comes on.
Sure.
Sing, sing "All Things Fine" or something.
All right. If I'm in your chairs, Commissioners, I'd, I'd jump on the 165, the 165,000 in child defense attorney costs. I'd attribute that to two things. First of all, as you know, Minnehaw County chose to contract attorney representation in abuse and neglect cases. Let's see here. Yeah, thank you very much. There we go.
Thank you.
Chose to contract for attorney representation in abuse and neglect cases with a number of attorney contractors here in the community. You can see child abuse and neglect cases are actually down pretty dramatically. I'd mentioned two things there for about the cost increase in child defense attorneys or, or defense attorneys in abuse and neglect cases. First, there's a contract overlap, as you might know already. In other words, attorneys that were appointed to abuse and neglect cases prior to the contractors taking over are still finishing out those lingering cases, and you have full contract payments on top of that. So, temporarily, as the older cases in the pipeline finish and the contractors gradually take over, you're going to have overlapping costs, so I think that's a big part of it. And then, the, the second factor, I believe, is even though abuse and neglect cases are pretty clearly down and continue to trend down based on the first six months of FY19, Judge Neelis was very fond of making the distinction that of the cases that are filed, in his estimation, many more involve petitions to permanently remove children. In his estimation, in the past, children were removed, there's a temporary custody hearing held, a case is opened, and then DSS works it out with the families for reunification, and the case is ultimately closed without a removal. We took a look at the number of petitions filed in each abuse and neglect, neglect case, and in fact, he was correct. he was correct. The, the percentage of petitions filed within A and N cases is actually much higher lately than, than it has been in past years. In other words, the cases are more serious, the state or the county moves more often to permanently remove children. And so, even though there's a decrease in the case filings, because of the nature of the cases, and the level of seriousness, and the number of those petitions filed, the court time and the, ultimately, the attorney time increases, even in the face of a caseload decrease. So, that would be our explanation for the increase in trial defense attorney costs. On psych evals, that's, that's a $20,000 increase, as you might, or supplemental, as you might recall. There's a statute that, as many of you know, a statute that requires psychosexual evaluations to be performed anytime a defendant is convicted of certain sexual-related offenses. Those evaluations typically, oh, maybe five years ago, cost about 2,500. Now, they cost about 3,500. One went as high as 4,000. They're statutorily required. The Department of Corrections says they're vitally important to inform their programming when a defendant or an inmate gets to the pen on a conviction on one of those sexual offenses. The judges have mixed feelings, frankly, about how useful those evaluations are. Their county paid. When that statute was first adopted, the legislature had, put some money aside to defray the expenses to the county initially. That money eventually disappeared. And so, now the county bills, bears the full expense for those evaluations. There's a, there's a, Kim estimates the overrun of about $20,000 in that category. At 3,500 apiece, or 4,000 apiece, you can imagine that even a slight increase, just a handful of cases, will drive that line item over. So, that, that would be our explanation in that category. And then, psychological commitments. It may be fortunate timing that Mr. Rostie's here with us this morning, because Jim and I have had discussions and meetings about how these costs are allocated. In my understanding, in my recollection, in the past, if a defendant were sent to HSC for an evaluation in a pending criminal case, as to the defendant's competency to stand trial, the court would pay for the defendant's residency while he was at HSC, and the cost of the evaluation, which was $600 in past years. Jim and I have had a discussion that, in Jim's estimation, if a defendant is committed to HSC long-term for restoration of competency pursuant to a criminal case, I know this is really technical, but it shifts the costs pretty dramatically, that that ought to come out of the court's county budget. In my recollection, that wasn't necessarily done in past years. But I know Jim goes through the, the monthly billings from HSC, and, and identifies the ones that were initially committed for restoration of competency pursuant to a criminal case, and that's now charged to the court's budget, has been for the last few years. In my, in my view, it's one of those things that I think the county is on the hook either way, since it's a mental health-related cost. It's sort of the county's choice about where you want to take that money. If you want to take it out of the court's county budget, it, I'm not, it's all, they're all county dollars ultimately. But I, I think as long as we handle commitments to HSC pursuant to a criminal case that way, and take it out of the court's county budget, we're going to continue to have overruns in that line item. And Commissioner, I don't know if you want to invite Jim to respond on that topic. I know it's sort of a complex accounting, green eye shade bureaucratic topic, but I think that's the explanation for the overrun in that category.
I have a question. No, go ahead. I'll ask a question, and we'll go right down the list. My question was, would it be helpful if the commission talked about lobbying and change to that psych bill on, on sexual assault ones? You said that the judges didn't feel that it was really helpful in the first place. And so, is it something we should have a conversation about? It might not happen this year, because we're pretty short of time to do anything. But maybe it's a conversation we should have this next year, and see if there's ways that we could tweak that bill. We, sorry that Representative Hallgard is not still here, because he's working on those types of things, and that might be another one we could add. And I'm looking at Carol too, to remember, a conversation to talk about that.
The court and the county, separately and together, have had discussions about whether to change the wording of that statute from shall order the psychosexual evaluation to may. In other words, leave it to the judges' discretion as to whether those evaluations would be helpful.
Right. They're pushing down the costs on us, and, and sometimes they just need to know what the problem is, especially since they cut the funding. So.
DOC, just to let you know, Commissioner, and perhaps you're way ahead of me on this background, DOC originally pushed for its adoption. They thought it would be helpful to the judges, and it would inform sentencing, and it would help them program once the inmate arrives at the pen. And, on the other hand, some of the judges, they're often boilerplate. The, the formats are the same. Now, I'm sure the providers would say, well, the, the evaluations are the same. They use a professionally-adopted or established mechanism to do these evaluations. So, they, of course, they look boilerplate. Given its, its limited usefulness in the minds of some judges, the court has had a discussion about changing that shall to may. And I know the county has too. And, and we've, in, in past legislative sessions, we've ultimately, the court and the counties have chosen not to pursue that. I, I think that's a, a good item for further discussion. There's one other angle on them too. As long as they're in place, and as long as they shall be done for certain sexual offenses, another consideration would be to contract for them.
Right.
We got a proposal from another provider just about a month ago, two professionals here in town, who are offering to do them for much less than the 3,500 or 4,000. So, I think that's another way to, to get a handle on these costs.
Way to start. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just, thank you for coming over. I know that your budget is a budget that we constantly struggle with, and you don't have a, you don't have the privilege of having any kind of magical ball when you're trying to do your budgeting. I'm curious about your comments on the child defense attorneys, and, and just kind of the trend line. And do you have any reason to think that this trend towards more intensive cases that involve removal, permanent removal of the child from the home, do you think that's going to be an ongoing trend? Do you think, are your budgeting for 2019, for example, is in line with where that's going?
I, I don't expect an overrun in that category next year of that size. I, I think once the, once the cases that were individually assigned to attorneys, privately-appointed attorneys are out of the pipeline, I think that cost will come down. By how much, it's hard to say. But I, I don't expect an overrun of that size next year. So far, from what we can tell, from the feedback I've gotten from the judges, the contract attorneys in A and N's, that approach has been going pretty well. There were concerns about, you know, a contract fixes the amount and any particular attorney's going to receive for a case. And so, there were concerns that the attorneys would hit certain time limits and be reluctant to devote more time to cases. That's not been our experience so far, that it's generally gone really well. So, if that continues to go well, from everything we can tell, then I, I would expect that cost, once those older cases are out of the pipeline, I'd expect that cost to go down.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karski, did you have a comment?
Well, two, kind of. And I'm trying to wrap my mind out around everything that we have going on there. So, the cost is, for the evaluations, is coming out of the court services budget, you said? Or out of the court budget? Well, make sure I'm using the right terms here. So, and if it, if it is, I mean, right pocket or left pocket, I know it really doesn't matter. But what are the alternatives for that? Is there a better way to management, manage it? Like you were talking about, you know, reducing the cost from 3,500 or 4,000 to down by half by going to a different provider. I mean, is there a better way to, for you, or whoever, to say, how can we do this better?
I think, I think if the county were to contract for those evaluations, that would help. And if I were the county, I'd certainly, certainly want to give that a try. I, I think it's, not to duck the question, Commissioner, but it really, just to defer to the commission, I think it really is a county decision about where you want to take it, right pocket or left pocket. Do you want, in other words, if a defendant is committed to HSC pursuant to a criminal case for restoration of competency long-term, do you want to take it out of Jim's budget, or the court's county budget?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't matter. Same money.
Given the budgeting in the court's county budget, if you choose to continue to take it out of the court's county budget, or Jim continues to send his, his name lists with, Kim knows, he highlights certain names, or this is court, this is court. If you continue to do it that way, with the court's current allocation, it's going to run over each year, if that's what, how you choose to handle it.
Who, who should own it? I mean, you keep, you know, the, the county, but who, who should own that, so that it is done properly?
You know, in, in my mind, of course, I'm court admin, and, and I, I sweat the court's county budget. And it seems to me that, as originally designed, years ago, maybe even before I got here, if the court sends a defendant down to HSC for an evaluation as to competency to stand trial, then it's sort of logical that comes out of the court's county budget. It's a court expense, it was ordered in a court case, and, okay. If a defendant is committed to HSC for some indefinite period for restoration of competency, that could occur six months from now, or two years from now, to, to me, that's more a cost of commitment, not too much unlike a commitment in a mental illness, M I L, case. So, I'd be inclined to take it out of Jim's, for, for long-term commitments. But, you know, I, I would imagine Jim might have a different perspective.
Maybe we can just look at it again, and see what we all think, since we've got statute two to address that. So.
Interesting.
Any additional questions for Carl? Okay. Thank you, Carl. We'll go back to the conversation at hand, I guess, with juvenile alternatives. We did kind of touch on that. Commissioner Bender had asked any questions. Are there any other questions on the juvenile alternatives? Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, and I think this is mostly for Jamie, so.
Jamie's still here.
Yep. So, we're $68,750 short. Explain to me, help me understand how that happened, I guess. I'm sorry. I should have, could have called you and asked you, but.
No, that's fine.
With holidays and everything. I appreciate knowing a little bit more.
That's fine. We entered into a new contract with an increased cost that I didn't plan for. In addition to that, we've increased the number of beds that have been utilized by Minnehaha County significantly over the last year. When Minnehaha County is using those beds, we're not able to sell them and, and make money. We roughly, this equals about one month's worth of beds that we, we're off.
Okay, okay. So, for 2019?
2019 has been budgeted for with those cost increase to our partners, and then also reevaluating how many beds Minnehaha County should be using, based on, we're going to continue to have the same judge. We can look at how things are going for the past two years with her now, and we should be able to be spot-on then for roughly bed utilization. I recently sent you two graphs of bed utilization, and as you can see, over those, those periods of time, there's no one set month that gives, that matches year to year. So, there's, there's no, like last year, we were really, had really expensive months in August through November. This year, we had cheaper months, August through November, and they were more expensive, March through July. So, I mean, it, it's just really hard to predict, because it's not same year to year. We are pretty, staying pretty steady though, overall.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender had another question?
I don't really have a question. I really wanted to apologize to you, because I caught you off-guard when you were up here before, and I think I got lost as we were moving around. And so, you did a great job answering the question the first time I asked it, when you were not on that topic. So, I just wanted to apologize.
No problem.
We have been jumping around today. It's a little crazy. I see Kim is.
I caught on fairly quick.
No, you, you did good. You did much better than I did. So.
Kim has been nodding in agreement with what Jamie's been saying in the background, and hopefully, this next year, we won't see that. And it has been a really good program for the kids. It's been a very good program. So.
Great.
Additional questions for, on juvenile alternatives? Any on the museum operations? And in the Museum Resource Center, I think that was, okay. And then Glory House, I guess we're back down to that one. Emergency management supplements, I think we went through that, unless you have another question on that. So, we're back to Glory House. And I think we're back to trying to finish up this conversation. So, I would look at comments, or whatever's ideas. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but this isn't an emotional thing for me. It's more about a financial commitment. It's based on, frankly, information that's been provided. A request from the Glory House makes lots of good sense financially to me. You know, we talk about a process. The process, frankly, works the way we have it. Even if the Glory House wasn't put in that process originally, what we're talking about is less than one-tenth, a 1% of a budget that, frankly, we made adjustments bigger than that, just here, with what we previously discussed. We talk about room for improvement. Actually, we are creating a room for improvement by giving them two more spaces that are going to turn over two or three times a year. That gives the judicial system the opportunity to put somebody in a location that gives them an opportunity for employment, for housing, and change their life system. We've, we've heard for a long time that the systems that we have don't necessarily work when we put them in institutional care, depending on what the issue is. This, frankly, takes them out of that, that circumstance. I also think by doing this, we're telling people that are talking about the Triage Center, the judicial system, any system, the mental health-related issues that we talk about, we're giving people an alternative rather than, and giving them the ability for a place that may work for them, rather than what we have traditionally done in the past. I feel pretty strongly that that $50,000 request is a one-time request that needs to be supported. And I'm going to make a motion that we supplement the Glory House for the $50,000 request coming out of the budget line item that we previously discussed.
I'll second the motion. If I could comment also?
Question in second. Commissioner Karski?
I agree with Commissioner Bennigan on this one, that, you know, unlike a lot of our other outside agency funding, that have ongoing budgets year after year, where they're, they come to us, and they get 20, or 30, or $40,000 year after year. This is a one-time request. And I, I also feel strongly that, over the years, it will prove to be a good investment in a program that's been proven to work. When I talk to board members, and Auditor Litz has been a board member there, and Commissioner Jim Schmidt from Lincoln County, and you talk about, you hear some of the great things that go on, and the programs that are run through here, the location, the city was able to work out a deal for the land for this project. I think this is a good thing for the county to do, and I'm, I'm supportive of it. We have the money through our human services budget. And I don't want to put Carrie on the spot, but if she would have comments, I'd love to hear them about what this money is coming from, and how it came. I'd appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carrie Benz, Human Services.
He's still not better.
We're thinking.
Carrie.
I certainly support the expansion of Glory House. I think their programming is incredibly dynamic. I think they are effective in the community. I would be really interested to have Dave present to us exactly how that will affect his budget, and forthcoming, how that will, the sustainability, and how that affects their ongoing budget. Certainly, our program alliance, which is our jail reentry program, we interface with them quite often, oftentimes either placing someone there, or on the receiving end of when someone leaves that program. So, I certainly think there's an intersect. In regards to the ASN, from which this money would come from, our finances are, we've done well. This year, our staff have done incredibly well with investing in our community, and really doing a lot of collaborative effort in supporting those that need assistance. So, in our rent line item, we do have $100,000 that we have been able to kind of skinny away, and be able to say that we've been able to save those finances to the county. That said, ultimately, it's your decision in regards to how you invest those monies. Certainly, I think there, as Commissioner Bender offered earlier, I think there's a number of really incredible service providers in our community. So, it's difficult to say that one deserves it more than the other. I do think, however, that investing in Glory House, their programming is dynamic, and certainly one of which we access readily.
Thank you, Carrie. Question? Commissioner Bender? Thank you, Carrie. Question? Commissioner Bender?
So one, a point of clarification. I, I think this is going to pass, whether I vote for it or not, which I, I mean, is not going to cause me to lose any sleep. I, I do support the program. Are we dedicating, I mean, given the fact that we have less information than maybe we had hoped to have, is the, is the motion to donate that amount strictly to, dedicated to the building of the new housing? So it's not a, it's not for ongoing general programs, it's strictly for the new housing that they're constructing. So that would just be something I'd like to clarify. You know, once again, I, I have, I have an issue with the process. I do not have an issue with the program.
I have a change in how we're going to make this motion by the state's attorney's office, if you would indulge me for a minute. So the motion could be a motion to amend the resolution to add the specific funds, which is $50,000 for, for the purpose and objective of building at the Glory House. Does that meet your?
If it passes the legal smell test, I'm fine with it.
Does that help you, Olivia? Okay.
My second.
May I just say, Madam Chair, that I think that the memorandum specifies certain affordable housing projects. And so perhaps the motion should reference the, those specific projects that were set out in the memorandum.
Where do you want me to add? What do you want me to add?
Well, I think for the purpose and object of, and I think the reference has been made to.
The Glory House.
To supplement the building, but perhaps it should be, you know, specific so that, you know, the purpose and object is to fulfill the obligations that Mr. Johnson had set out in his memorandum.
An additional line on there?
Yeah, here's the letter that I was just looking at electronically. And so I think that the.
For the, for the purpose of achieving for a financial affordable housing project, does that work for you? In the glory, this first line?
Well, I think the point is to make sure that it's for the project that they're working on.
Yes.
Which I think, I don't see that there's a specific title of that in this letter. But it's the project for which there's the shortfall that they've outlined in the letter. I just don't know that there's a title for that project.
The construction of new affordable housing. Maybe we could say something like that.
Construction of new affordable housing.
You know, perhaps just the existing project.
That's the third paragraph.
Okay, we're good. We need a motion. We have a motion in a second on it, then I need a roll call vote.
Kerski?
Yes.
Barth? Bender? Bennega?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Okay, Commissioner Bender?
I have a question. Did we approve item 12?
Yes.
I guess I've.
Yeah, that was a part of all of 12. They just had to fill in the number.
Okay, so this, this motion was part of 12?
Yes. That was an amendment. Okay, so now we have to have the whole entire thing. Okay, budget approval, so this is, approve the, the complete 2018 annual budget.
So that would, that would be a general fund supplement of 405,700 dollars and an emergency management supplement of 22,500 dollars.
That answer everybody's question? I'll need a motion on that.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion is second and a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Yes.
Hi, Berger.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Now we're done with 12. Thank you. Item number 16 is Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to report that I think Commissioner Barth and I were able to tend, and I think maybe Commissioner Bennega even came towards the end, but the courts, and specifically Chief Justice, Chief Judge Hellman did an excellent presentation last week, last Wednesday, I believe, to legislators about the issues that the courts are dealing with. And it's the same issues that the county are dealing with, and they all kind of roll on the same road forward and, or backward, depending on how you want to look at it. But I just really want to thank them for that work. I think if you've, you know, it's great data for us to have as we have conversations and, and something that I'll certainly be keeping, keeping a hold of so that we can try to help explain to people what some of the drivers are to the costs that we're struggling to, to keep up with.
Thank you. Any additional?
I would just concur with Commissioner Bender on this because it was really quite generous of them to invite us along for that presentation. Thank you, Carl.
Any other liaison reports? I would look for new business.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I forgot to wish you a happy birthday on, on Tuesday, and Merry Christmas and Happy Birthday.
Thank you. I'm older now. Item number 18 is old business. And I would just mention that our next commission meeting is obviously not on the January 1st. It is on January 8th. So just so you know, 8th at 8 o'clock, or 9 o'clock, excuse me. Then I would look for a motion to recess a commission meeting so we can reconvene in executive session. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody who's here. Thanks for showing up.